Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the whole meeting for June 20, 2023. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Zawanski?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First items we have in the committee this morning are under building and zoning committee. Chairman Gunstein.
Thank you, President Wallace. Our first item is the prominent of Bartlett mixed-use development. The petitioner is requiring a preliminary and final plat subdivision to create a three-lot parcel and rezone the 4.6 acre property as from a B2 neighborhood shopping district to a B3 PUD zoning district. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow a planned unit development and a car wash on Lot 1. The site PUD plan identifies a car wash on Lot 1, a 14,000 square foot commercial building on Lot 2, and a 6,175 square foot daycare center on Lot 3. All the buildings will have a similar facade, which includes metallic gray panels, beige, stone masonry, and light gray ephes. The site will be accessed via curb cuts on County Farm and Newport boulevards. The existing BP station, which is at County Farm and Sterns, that access will be removed. The cross-access easement will allow access to the site via the BP gas station curb cuts on Sterns Road. The plans have been reviewed by the DuPage County Department of Transportation, and they have no objections to the locations of the curb cuts on County Farm Road. That is replacing the existing curb cuts. And for that, I will turn it over to Kristi Stone for a little bit more on this property that's been sitting vacant for a long time.
Yes. As you can see this lot, I'm going to take the back of the Google Earth aerial.
Kristi, can you put the microphone a little closer to you?
Yeah, please.
So, as you can see from the Google Earth aerial, there is an existing BP gas station at the corner, and there are two access drives that currently dead-end into this property. The plan was always to have interconnections to minimize the amount of curb cuts on County Farm and Sterns Road. As part of this development, the curb cut that you see right now on County Farm Road will be closed and move north. This was recommended by DuPage County due to some of the intersection improvements that are expected at County Farm and Sterns Road. There will not be any additional accesses on Sterns Road. There will be one curb cut on Newport. So, we've gone through several reiterations of the concept of this plan with the developer. Originally, they were also proposing a second retail shopping center. There really wasn't enough room to fit in everything that they were trying to in this space. We've worked with them significantly to get the cross-connections with the BP owner to the southeast corner of the site. They are proposing a fence along the north property line as required by our landscape ordinance. Detention is provided at the northwest corner of the site.
Does any of the commissioners have any questions?
I have some questions regarding sound coming from the car wash relative to our residents nearby. Has a sound engineer been consulted?
No.
Is that going to be a requirement if they move forward?
Yes, we've required decibel level studies before.
Is it outside vacuum?
The vacuums are proposed on both sides of the drive aisle south of the car wash.
Are they going to be fully enclosed?
They are not fully enclosed. It's what you see kind of at the Everwash, similar to what's at the Everwash, and Mr. Squeaky's on Lake Street. There's a canopy over them.
Those two locations I'm not so concerned about because they're on major roads. This one does have residents right across the street from Newport. So, I mean, that would be my only concern, I think, with this development. I think it's an improvement to what's there currently. So, that's just something I'll keep my eye on when it comes back before us.
Can you enlighten us, Kristi, on other potential projects that have came our way for that corner? Because I think, if I remember correctly, there's just a lot of land that needs to be moved, and...
We had a concept plan years ago that was for an Aldi that never came to fruition. It never became a full development application. There was actually, at the time, opposition to an Aldi shopping center at this location. So, this, again, is going to require a public hearing, so we would have the neighbors come out at that point. But there hasn't been any full development application submitted for this in the 20 years I've been here.
I think the building looks really cool with the stone columns and stuff. I know there is a lot of dirt that needs to be hauled out of there from previous construction projects that were in that area. I would just ask that the developer, you know, when he's taking the dirt out, be cognizant that he should probably leave some along the back as a barrier and put the fence on top of that to kind of allow for a little bit more sound and light barrier there and blocking. It would save him some money in hauling it out as well.
Okay.
So...
It'd be interesting to see what the zoning board says.
Yeah. So, but I... Anybody else have any questions?
Just one thought. Do we have to worry about cars cutting through the parking lot to get off of County Farm to get over to Newport to avoid the light?
Cutting through?
Yeah, just cutting through. Probably not a big deal.
Well, if anybody doesn't have any more questions, we can pass, push this on to the planning and zoning board for a hearing. All right. Thank you. We have number two on our list is Hawk Hollow Middle School and Intersection Analysis. Petitioner is requesting a plot of consolidation to create a single lot for the conversion of Hawk Hollow Elementary School into a middle school. The petitioner is also requesting to rezone the new 19.9 acre parcel to the P1 Public Land Zoning District upon consolidation. The village's future land use plan designates the property as suburban, residential, and municipal institutional. The petitioner is also requesting an amendment to the future's land use plan to remove the Fair Oaks Road extension and designate the entire property as municipal and institutional. The petitioner is also requesting a site plan for the proposed school facility expansion, which also includes two-story addition as well as two parking lots, providing a total of 236 parking spaces. U-46 anticipates a total of 27 classrooms and a maximum enrollment of approximately 700 students upon the completion of the expansion. The majority of the expansion is devoted to flex lab space, library expansion, and a new gymnasium. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing, reviewed the petitioner's request, and recommended approval at their meeting on June 2, 2023, with the following conditions. The village shall clearly monitor the intersection of Schick and Gerber. The petitioner shall study the proposed north fence regarding grades and heights. The petitioner shall add screening at the end of Winston Lane at the end of the fence as far as possible. And fourth, the petitioner shall provide a safety monitor crossing guard at the proposed north entrance. After the planning and zoning commission meeting, the applicant has agreed to having the safety monitor crossing guard at north entrance and has submitted the following items: Fence Section Exhibit 1, Landscape Plan L2. And I will turn this over to Kristi Stone for some further feedback and information.
So, I also want to add, U-46 submitted this afternoon a letter stating that they have agreed to the recommendations. They will provide the safety monitor. They have added screening, which is seven Black Hill spruce trees at the end of the fence as requested by the residents at the planning and zoning meeting. They have moved the fence along the north property line further south by a couple feet. They did that because of the grade of the property. I'm going to bring up my exhibit. As you can see, the property is raised slightly, so by moving the fence further from the property line, it actually gives the effect that the fence seems taller than it is. I know a resident did mention something about the eight-foot fence requirement. That is only if the property is industrial and has uses such as mine crushing, things like that. That six-foot tall fence does meet what our landscape requirement states. Our traffic engineer has looked at the site. She has a separate memo that was attached, and she does recommend that we continue monitoring Schick Road and Gerber as part, in the future.
Does anybody have any questions?
Whose jurisdiction is Gerber and Army Trail? Is it Bartlett or is it Carol Street?
We have the north leg. The rest of it would be DuPage County.
And by closely monitoring, talking about our traffic consultant?
She was saying that we should probably look at doing like a full-blown traffic study, getting the traffic counts out there. It's outside the purview of what U-46 would be required to do as part of this development.
Was U-46 saying that they would like to see the village closely monitor that intersection of Schick and...
That was the planning and zoning commission's recommendation, that the village continue monitoring it, which is something that, since it's our jurisdiction, we would be the responsible party for that.
Kristi, could you explain that, please? You said, "We'll be responsible for that." What does that mean?
We would pay for it.
That means we would be the ones that would pay for it because that, whatever intersection improvement is determined to be necessary, the village would be the ones that would pay for it.
Do we know where these students are coming from? Additional students?
U-46 is here. At the planning and zoning commission meeting, they had not determined the attendance boundaries.
Hi, good evening. I'm Suzanne Johnson, and the superintendent of School District U-46, Three Thistle Court, Streamwood, formerly 210 Little John Court in Bartlett, which is, backs up to the 15th fairway at Bartlett Hills. So, just as a old-school connection for everyone here. We have not finalized boundaries yet, so I can't give you the exact location from where students would be attending. We do expect, though, a fair number of students would be traveling by bus to the middle school as well. There was great discussion during the previous meeting as well, though, about the fact that a number of students from the surrounding neighborhoods would also be interested in walking, which I think was part of that discussion, certainly about the crossing guard or assistance with crossing onto the property.
I have a question.
Would these students be coming from outside of Bartlett?
I'm sorry?
Would they be coming from outside of Bartlett?
There is certainly the potential that they could be coming from outside of Bartlett, given the location of this middle school.
And I listened to the planning and zoning commission meeting. I didn't have a packet open in front of me, but there was something mentioned about, someone was questioning red marks, and the response from the district was that the marks represent students who live outside the district boundaries?
So, we do have some students who attend in district schools for, to access some of our other programming. So, whether it be our specialized student services programs, our therapeutic day schools, things like that within the district. So, we do have some students from outside of the district who are enrolled in U-46.
So, do we have a percentage?
It's a very small percentage. It'd be less than 1% of our student population.
I have a question for you. First off, congratulations on being the superintendent.
Thank you.
Question I have is, if this is going to be a walking school, what is the likelihood that kids are going to be crossing Schick Road and/or Army Trail?
So, we don't expect that it would be a walking school, but what we do expect realistically, and just any of you who have ever met, a 12- or 13- or 14-year-old, on occasion will not follow the request of riding a bus to school. So, we do expect that there will likely be students in the immediate surrounding neighborhood who would opt to walk. So, our plan is to provide as many safe paths to the school as possible. Obviously, we're providing transportation to the students in that area. Students would not be expected to cross Schick and Army Trail. They currently do not cross Schick and Army Trail to access Bartlett High School, for example, with transportation, unless, right, again, students choose to do that on their own, but transportation is provided.
Safety's my big concern on that because I know when Bartlett High School opened, there was a tragedy day one, and I think it's imperative that all those items that could be prevented, all the measures, should be looked at. So, that was, that's why I asked about that.
Absolutely.
I have concerns about the only ingress from this school is on Gerber. So, if we have an issue on Gerber Road and we can't get students out, there's no other way to get them out. I mean, we do have a school on the west side of 59 that has an entrance from Bartlett Road and Munger.
And we do have in place a future land use plan that would have Fair Oaks Road go through, and it's my understanding that whether the homes that were originally supposed to go there, or the school, or anything, when that project was to begin, is when the road was going to go through. So, I'm, I don't think we should remove that. That's something that we spent time, money, and effort on, whether it's U-46 going there or single-family residences going there. The plan was to put that road through. So, I don't like seeing that that's just going to be pushed off to the side. And I think there's plenty of options that can be looked at to make that Fair Oaks go through, and that would cut out a lot of the safety concerns that some of the people brought up in the room today.
Yeah, and I think it's important that you listen to a guy that's been driving a bus for 11 years versus somebody that's just studying traffic. He's telling us point-blank it's going to be a problem turning on and off of Gerber with buses, the way that it is set up right now. He just stood there and told us that. That was one of my biggest concerns when U-46 came here in the first place, is that's, I can just picture a nightmare on Gerber Road.
In the Fair Oaks extension, it should be no surprise to anybody, the sign's been posted since day one, that this is going to be a future road going through here.
And it would certainly make more sense on the Army Trail corridor to have that intersection properly go through instead of jog over to...
It's such a hassle to get to North Avenue from Bartlett right now, that side of town. So...
I mean, if you go and look at that, it's beautiful and flat and just goes straight...
Well, case in point, this past week, West Bartlett Road was closed because of a gas leak. So, now you had to go, if you were, your only east-west was Sterns or Lake Street. So, had Jersey Lane Auburn gone through, that might have been a way to avoid the gas leak on Bartlett Road. Now, we've got children that there's only one way in and out of the school. Hopefully, it's never an issue, but this is our job to make sure these things are looked at before any solid plans are made.
So, I'm all about connectivity. So, for me, that's the big thing. We plan for connectivity for our residents, for our bike paths, for our sidewalks, for our children, and our residents that are coming to Bartlett because of that. So, when we close that off, it concerns me. We've already given up 16 residential lots that could have been on the tax roll to accommodate this, and I will say, being that those residents bought those houses, knowing that was a residential lot back there, I think there's something to definitely look at on that because, you know, you are changing their backyard, and I think that is a concern I would have if I lived there.
Well, and that's, to your point, that's lost revenue. So, that's 16 homes that we won't get taxes from, and U-46 will, the school is going to cost the taxpayers money to build, it's going to cost us money to maintain, and we don't generate any taxes from U-46 versus what we could have gotten off those houses. So, again, it's give and take.
Chief, what is the speed limit on Gerber there? It's 35 miles an hour, isn't it?
It's 35 miles per hour.
Yeah, yeah, all right. And now we have, if you're westbound on Gerber, okay, and, I'm sorry, on Sterns there.
Schick.
That's Schick, right, Schick. The speed limit on Schick is 35 miles an hour, isn't it?
Yeah, that's correct.
If you're westbound on Schick, you know, you have, you're coming over the hill there, you know, you come down, and I'll tell you, by that church there over there, you know, I've gone through there many, many times, and I'll tell you, 35 miles an hour, no one's going 35 miles an hour, they're going much faster than. So, now, we want to have a crossing guard at Gerber and Schick, all right?
I don't think that's what was proposed.
I don't think that's correct. I don't think there was any intention to have a crossing guard at Gerber and Schick Road.
Gerber and Jackaranda.
Correct.
Oh, that's where it's going, okay.
The other piece, if I can just, for a moment, clarify. Hawk Hollow initially had an enrollment at one point of its peak, close to 600 students, again, with increased bus traffic to and from the site with only the entrances in and off of Gerber Road. So, I just want to remind everyone, over the course of the last several years or decade, there's been an ongoing diminishment in enrollment, which had dropped that enrollment down to approximately 300-ish students. So, the proposal for a middle school, of course, brings that back up to a little bit larger than what that enrollment was. Our goal is approximately 750 students, again, with bus transportation, but I just wanted to remind everyone that initially, when that elementary opened, that was planning and discussion there as well.
Exactly, but we've also increased the amount of residents in that whole surrounding area, across Army Trail and across Schick Road. So, we've increased the amount of residents, or in turn, youth, that are going to be traveling on there. So, I agree with you, it probably was designed for that, but we have to look at this for what is today and tomorrow and 10 years down the road. Is the expansion that cuts off our right-ofways, which, again, I, again, connectivity is, for me, a big deal, what is going to be proposed in the area? I'm trying to find it on your submittal. Is it a detention pond that cuts us off from being able to do the interconnection there?
So, the right-of-way is through this line. They're really not proposing anything within the right-of-way here.
It's Fair Oaks Road, basically.
Or here. So, there is a wetland here, basically. Originally, when the Fair Oaks connection was drawn, it was further east, and it went through the middle of the site. As part of the lawsuit with, there was a previous lawsuit on the site. Because of that, Fair Oaks Road was shifted over. There's a wetland where the road currently dead-ends, or the right-of-way dead-ends. Because of all the changes with that, the developers were never required to construct those portions of Fair Oaks Road. So, that would all be done, they didn't contribute towards the future cost of that. That's something that would all be done at the village expense.
So, that road is going to have to go through some guy's property?
Correct.
And that's, we don't have a right-of-way through his property?
You do not, there's actually two properties in this location that are privately owned, that have not agreed to dedicating any sort of right-of-way, selling property for right-of-way, have not expressed any interest in giving the village right-of-way to continue Fair Oaks Road through...
To get connectivity, you would really, I mean, you would have to condemn someone's property or try to get into that.
Correct.
Or go around it.
You can go around it, and the developer would be willing to adjust if he was really interested in that property, a developer. But if that property is landlocked and he can't, now it devalues the property. If there's a plan to build 15, 20, 30 homes over there, now you've limited it to whatever three, four-acre parcel there, and...
Where are you talking?
On the backside, by Norway and Hawk, what is this, Fair Oaks?
Kristi, do you have the Fair Oaks Road schematic that you could show us, where it was supposed to go?
Where it was supposed to go? I do. Let me...
Figured you probably would.
I try to be prepared. So, if you, see on this, let me, I don't, I have a marker here. So, the Jackaranda, oh, that's a bad color. Let's see, format. So, the Hawk Hollow property is located approximately here. As you can see, Fair Oaks, this is from 1988, was expected to go through the middle of the property. As part of the lawsuit, the roadway location was changed to kind of go through it like this.
We wouldn't want to put that road any closer to the school. So, even if U-46 left that school alone, we wouldn't put a road any closer to a school.
Correct.
That's the, the back part of that, the back part of Hawk Hollow there is all, it's either grassland or it's a fenced-off pavement area, that back part. So, you're not actually putting it closer to...
So, what was the intention with...
The sidewalks are already in.
Yeah, the sidewalks are already in there.
What was the intention with Gerber, then? If that were to happen, if that was, because that looks like a dangerous intersection, too, would Gerber be cut off?
So, with the original intention, Gerber was, at the time that this was drawn, Gerber only had a stop sign. There were no lights. The county said there was never going to be a light there. Eventually, they put in a temporary light, then they've actually created permanent lights. They've fully improved that intersection with pedestrian signals as well.
So, I think that that's the case in point. We're supposed to look at this now so that we're not doing things 10, and 15, and 20 years from now. So, I think this really needs to be looked at until it's exhausted one way or the other.
I do want to touch on one thing that was brought up one way in, one way out. I'm looking at Winston Lane as it borders the back parking lot of the new turnaround parking, and I know it might be an inconvenience, but I think at a minimum, there should be some sort of access point there for emergency vehicles and gated, but I think that would be a way out if there was a tragedy and we had to get people out faster, that you could open that gate, or the emergency services could open a gate.
You mean, instead of just a walk path?
Yeah, right now, see how it stops right at the parking lot there? Why can't we tie, why can't we put a emergency exit there? Side note from the Fair Oaks, but I just feel like we are landlocking our kids in there, fencing them in and not allowing an access point somewhere else should there be an emergency.
I would be interested in seeing some updated plans on what Fair Oaks would look like, and then have our traffic study lady do a traffic study on what that might look like, and also what the cost would be to complete what was supposed to be completed years ago.
So, you'd like us to have an engineering study done of the, because there have not been formal engineering plans for the whole right-of-way for Fair Oaks.
Yeah, why?
So...
Why? I don't know what the boards were thinking back then. That should have been done years ago, the Fair Oaks Road should have been done. It was all, they poured sidewalks for it.
But it was done piecemeal, one development at a time. There wasn't a final plan of how it was going to go through the sites. I'm not sure if the wetland existed. If you look at DuPage County maps, wetlands change over time.
This is Claudia Welp at KH Engineering, 2200 Capit Drive. There is a wetland there that is flagged where the intersection is. And then also on the east side as well, it's all wetlands on the east side where that road would go through.
Ms. Stone, would you recommend connecting Fair Oaks Road to Gerber?
Fair Oaks Road to Gerber?
Yeah.
I think that Gerber Road has the opportunity to have improvements done to it as opposed to creating a new road that runs sort of parallel and intersects to it. The purpose of Fair Oaks Road in 1988 was the thought that the railroad was going to allow the connection into Struckman, and so this was going to be a connection to get people all the way to South Bartlett Road. The railroad will not allow any additional cross, at-grade crossings. There used to be one in Hanover Park, close, just down the way. Let me zoom out a little bit. Am I coming here?
In my opinion, while you're looking for that, I think that we're going for what is easier versus what is better. I don't, I don't care what you're talking about, how many times I've been down Gerber and had to stop and wait at that stupid light for five minutes and then take a right, left, and then take a right. It's just a hassle for residents. You know how nice it would be if you could take a right off of Schick, go down Fair Oaks Road, hit one stoplight, and keep going to North Avenue?
And rent 21 school buses and 179 cars.
And we don't configure stoplight timing at that intersection. That's the county, I believe, who does that, correct? The county does that at Army Trail and Gerber?
Yeah, they would control the signaling.
That's my opinion.
And wasn't the county in favor of having Fair Oaks go straight across Army Trail? Wasn't that their intention also?
That was not their intention. That's been our, part of our comprehensive plan from 1988, prior to the development of Fairfax Lane.
So, they'd allowed us to have a temporary light just a stone's throw west of Fair Oaks and Army Trail that accesses that medical building?
That's not, that's not a temporary light, that's a permanent light.
It's a temporary entrance into that.
Be a temporary entrance, it was supposed to be a temporary entrance, okay.
If Fair... With the thought... With the thought if Fair Oaks ever went through, they would prefer a access point only for it to have one access point. And they were wanting that to be on Fair Oaks if it was extended.
Because it makes more sense.
Yeah.
In the way it runs right now.
Did we, did we figure out what was on the areas of Fair Oaks? Did we figure out what was being built on the areas where we're being asked to forego our right of way? I thought based off what I've seen, it was a detention pond. If I'm mistaken, please let me know.
It's, we're not, we're not building past that sidewalk. It is, there's a bunch of utilities through that right of way. So we're not building anything there other than connecting pipes between the two ponds to equalize them. That's all that's really being introduced there.
Existing ponds?
There is an existing pond, but we're making it larger and then we're connecting them, which wasn't, it's not there today.
So the right of way is in between the two detention ponds.
And that walk is, we're taking a piece out and re-putting it back in, but that's just for utility connections. So that walk is remaining exactly where it is.
No, Dan, aren't you, you're looking for, what, Christie, what you were just showing there, that's between the new access road.
From Fairfax?
That's the Fair Oaks right of way is, would be right.
But aren't you asking for a little bit further?
Yeah, I'm looking for south where Fairfax Drive would connect into that around.
Fairfax Drive or Fair Oaks?
I'm sorry, Fair Oaks.
Okay. Fair Oaks would be down in this area. They're not proposing anything in that portion.
So if the right of way was left out of this?
That's out of our property, yeah. I'm sorry, what is your question?
If the right of way portion was left out of this, what would it change for the project? Like, could you still move forward or is that like a key piece?
I guess the question would be some of our utility connections going through there. I'm sure we're impeding the right of way with, you know, our setbacks and whatnot. We'd have to look at that.
It would also reduce their bus stacking capability.
How many buses, I'm sorry?
With the potential that when Fair Oaks went through, that that would change how many buses they could stack.
How many buses are they proposing to go through here morning and then afternoon?
Total amount of buses?
Well, they've got room for 21 buses.
Yeah, there's room for 21 or 22 buses to stack, but it's 18 buses is the anticipated amount at staggered times.
Because I know the Gerber intersection pretty well and it's got a pretty good slope to it and I know it could be dangerous in the winter. And it's also a fast light. Army Trail takes precedent on the green. So that would have to be recalibrated because you're going to have those buses backed up. If 40% of the buses are truly going south, which I believe that's what we said, right? And 60% are going north, you're going to see an increase over there of backed up traffic during the two periods of time, mostly in the afternoon when they're leaving.
We could put recommendations in that the buses have to turn north and go through the Schick Road and Gerber intersection to go north to avoid the backup.
But that intersection is already a mess.
And that's what we're looking at. That's what our traffic engineer is suggesting that we look at and do a full blown study.
Are we looking at a traffic light for that?
Yes.
But it doesn't warrant one at this time.
Based on the numbers that we had. So she's saying, she's recommending numbers were all in flux because of COVID and everything. She's suggesting that we do a full blown traffic study. Right now, it looks like it meets it in the PM hour. It looks like, but if we get more accurate, up to date numbers, it may warrant it on more of the, more of the times.
I think it warrants it as soon as a kid walks across that street, hitting that walk button and having that light turn red so he can walk. That's where I think it's warranted, right from the start.
Well, and we can't do the traffic studies till school's back in session because Bartlett High School is down the road. So we want to include that traffic in the mornings and in the afternoons.
Offseason traffic. I'm all in support of this being a middle school. I just want to make sure that what we have set forth years prior are going to line up with where we want to be 20 years from now.
Yeah, I agree.
And if it means we have to make some adjustments, then we have to make some adjustments. I'm not saying that we're going to give up all of our right of ways. I don't, I don't believe in doing that. We've got tremendous amount of connectivity issues in Bartlett right now. And I would still, I would fight every day to get all those right of ways back because it hampers our ability to keep traffic flowing through our town from east to west and northwest. And in addition to that, we've done some of those where we've been locked out of being able to put bike paths in. And that unfortunately is not good for our residents. Again, I'm also in support of this being a middle school. I would like to see, as President Wallace said, a little bit more engineering on that. I would like to see if that Winston Lane access point can be opened just for emergency vehicles. I don't know if anybody else has any other questions on it.
Without the right of ways, it truly does make the village very patchwork.
And we have a lot of infill sites that we can't do anything with. I'm not saying that this particular one is on the agenda for a developer right now. But when that farm, like every other farm that's been in Bartlett thus far, except for one, has all gone away to developers. So today, this farmhouse might be here. Tomorrow, that family 10, 15 years from now, might want to sell that to a developer. And now we have locked that in so we, they can't. Or we limit it to what we can develop there. And for me, that's where I see the issue. I think there's some round ways we can get around that. I just think we have to go back to the drawing board, look at that and really take a hard look at what our long-term plan is for certain areas and that being one of them, so.
Yeah, I totally agree with the long-term plan. This, I do not want to spend the next 20 years stopping at that stoplight, taking a left and then taking a right. I won't say, I can't say that enough times. And we just had a guy that's been driving a bus for 11 years, God bless him, saying that this is going to be a problem at Gerber and Army Trail. If you don't believe him, then who can you believe?
For U 46, is this the best site in the south side of the district?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, as we, as we look for different components within the school district, we've identified that we do not have any schools in this, middle schools in this area of our, of our school district to be able to serve students potentially, you know, certainly in this immediate area prior to identifying the boundaries. It's on almost 20 acres of land, which is always a recommendation when you're looking for middle schools. You want there to be green space. You want there to be ample flowage and parking around that space. When we look at what this building will allow for square footage per student, we'd certainly like to be on average somewhere between 160 and 180 square feet per student as they move around that building. This gives us the things that we need when we're looking at certainly first and foremost, safety and security. We've reviewed emergency plans, like we've been going through that process with the Village of Bartlett. We'll continue to be committed to doing that. We've had a school there. I recognize this is a larger school. I recognize that the area continues to grow. That's also why we're interested in putting a school here because we know that there continues to be a need in this area. We recognize the security that the building will provide as well as enhanced learning spaces for the students in this area of the district who have not had access to that. Your most modern and current middle school, as it resides in Bartlett, is currently Eastview Middle School, which is almost 50 years old. So when we think about the spaces that this will provide for STEM, for exploratory, for any of our rotational elective courses, for being able to team students and give them the opportunity to be within a grade level team with the same set of teachers and access resources, we're really excited about bringing this forward and partnering with the Village of Bartlett to be able to provide this for our students in this area of the district. You know, no doubt, we've submitted documentation to you. We'll continue to partner with you to be able to address the things that we can address to bring this school here. You know, our goal is the 25, 26 year. And of course, with construction planning and with the need for all the resources, that's an aggressive timeline for us to be able to do that already. So, you know, for us this evening, our goal was certainly to come, to have you all unanimously support this immediately. But we also then need to be really clear on what our next steps are because I'm, want to make sure that we continue to be a collaborative partner with you and whatever our role is in bringing this forward, that we're really clear on that. And if there's work that the village needs to do, I want to be clear on how we support you in that work so we still can have an opportunity of meeting our goal of the 25, 26 school year to be able to welcome students to the, to the middle school with the Village of Bartlett, right? What a, what a great opportunity to do that. And so, you know, any immediate feedback and details that you can give us would be greatly appreciated if this evening, you know, as you proceed to either make decisions or give us some next steps to partner with you.
When do you plan to redraw the boundaries?
Well, so being able to redraw the boundaries is dependent upon being able to open the school. So one of the items that we need to certainly take into account is we can't redraw boundaries until we have a confirmation that we can proceed with a school that would host approximately 750 students in this area of the school district. It's really difficult for us to redraw boundaries if we don't know where the schools are going to be and what those targets look like. So our goal would be to be bringing that work forward this fall and winter as we proceed. Tonight, while a part of our team was here, the other part of our team was at our Unite 46 or Reunite 46 event, we're bringing community members back again to engage in this work and to be able to hear about the updates to our facilities planning and of course have a voice in, in that work as we proceed.
Wanted to just mention one thing. I've been listening to the comments and whatnot and it appears that no one really has an objection to the school being there. It's the access point. And, you know, I concur with what's been said here. It's that, you know, I, I think you need to reevaluate the access. And I definitely am concerned about the traffic on Gerber Road turning on the Army Trail and also on Schick. And, you know, I've been at that intersection in the winter and whatnot and it, I've had some difficulties there, so consequently.
We're not strangers to the area. I've been here 45 years. It's, that's a, it's a rough, it's a rough road.
No, I understand that. You know, previously I spent 16 years at Bartlett High School as a teacher and finally the principal before moving into my role at the district office. So I'm well aware of the traffic pattern here and the challenges that, that we've faced in this area for numerous years. My request though is that we get that information, I mean, we've been going through this process with you, collaborating with you on this process. And then tonight, it became the point that we can't continue when we were here three weeks ago and that wasn't the information that was provided to us at that time, so.
Oh, no. We clearly stated that there's going to be problems with traffic and this board was going to have problems with traffic.
Right.
So that's not accurate.
Mike did bring up the right of way. He did explain it to everybody.
So I will clarify, in the minutes from that meeting, there were items that we needed to address and we worked to address those items. At the conclusion of that meeting, there was not a directive at that time. If there had been, we would have started it immediately. And that's where I'm coming from. We're here to collaborate with you and we would like to be able to resolve this as quickly as possible. We just need to know that that's what you are seeking and that it's within our realm to do that. Like, it seems as though some of this is not within, on currently on our property.
Let me ask, are we all pretty much in agreement that access is a concern?
Access and traffic.
I think this is improved access to the site.
Right.
Two entrances going in and out.
Right.
So I think that's improved. I can't speak for bus traffic, but I can speak to a traffic expert who says that it's not an issue. I understand that there is currently a bus driver in our audience that speaks differently to that. But I think this is an improvement to the site and also the 16 houses that were supposed to be built there, that developer pulled out of the deal. Can you speak to that because of site conditions, I think, right?
There were site conditions and there were some soil issues.
It was not even, it's not really developable to be, you know, economical for a developer to build it and that's why U 46 has it again, so.
I don't think we're contesting the 16 lots. I think we're, we're looking at the preservation of our right of ways. And I actually, one last question for the engineer. I do have a question for you. In your professional opinion, if you went back and looked at this, do you see path where we can preserve those right of ways?
You know, I think there would be some significant work just regarding all the wetlands that are on site. There is a lot of wetlands on the east and on the southwest, so those would all have to be looked at by a wetland consultant, which I am not. And, and those have been all staked out and flagged and we're avoiding those with the, you know, right amount of distances and whatnot so we don't impact those things. So that's definitely one of the, I think, largest concerns, just all the existing wetlands that are out there now.
Would the district be open to exploring a possibility to partner with a, with a traffic light at Gerber and Schick?
I don't think that's really our, at least that was my understanding, was that was something you guys were studying as part of Lynn and Bartlett's study or no?
So the peak hours, the peak PM hour is the only time that that qualifies for the light at this time with the information that we have? The school district's peak hour is not, doesn't correlate to that time.
Well, we have to do something at that intersection because, you know, the additional traffic we're going to have there now and, you know, put a value, you know, put a value on a life. If one of its buses got hit or, or if somebody got injured, you know, crossing the street there, something has to be done there.
Right, and like our traffic consultant stated, that is something that we should do. We should have a full study done so we have accurate traffic counts to determine if we can, if the signal should go in.
Well, let's do it then.
And then we can budget that for, for the capital budget to get that completed.
Yeah.
I just, piggybacking off of something Trustee Hopkins said. If a developer was to build at this corner of Gerber, let's just say a commercial project that employed 700 employees, okay? And we knew the traffic was going to be increased, wouldn't we ask the developer to look at contribution to that? And I'm not, I'm not saying that that's always the right route. I'm just saying, we have in the past, correct?
When we have.
It's not out of the norm.
When we have done traffic cost impact analysis before, we look at when the highest peak traffic is, is it AM, PM? And then we look at each user's PM impact that they would have based on their use, what their traffic counts are, and then they pay their proportion just based on that PM hour because that's when they're contributing the most.
I was just curious how that has happened in the past, so.
I would make the suggestion after the engineer's comments that maybe we look and see, is there a way to do it? I know you're just kind of guessing. Get a little bit more detailed so the board is more informed. Is there a way to do it where we don't have to give up our right of ways? That, you were looking for direction. I think that that would be the direction we would want to go.
Would the board also be interested if they could do just an emergency only access connection on Winston Drive to the north?
Think that's a great idea.
Just emergency access, it would be.
I would say in addition to, I would say with what Kevin said and with what you said.
Is that something?
This is, this is going to be the way it's going to be for 25 or 30 years. Look at Eastview, 50 years. So let's do the right thing now and let's try and be conscious of their construction schedule. But I don't want to give something up now because they're in a hurry to get a school built that we're going to have to live with for 50 years. And there's plenty of land at Eastview, right? It's more than 20 acres. We could make the addition there and leave this alone.
Then your bus and traffic issue is just going to move.
Yeah, we're going to redevelop on that eventually.
I don't think, I don't think that's, it actually doesn't solve the border issue. Trying to separate a little bit of the border, so.
If you can't, if you can't build a school here and you have to look elsewhere, would Bartlett residents have to get bus to another community possibly?
Oh, it's very likely. I mean, you already have Bartlett residents who are bused to another community already, right? For a middle school.
But this helps keep our residents in our town.
Yeah, I mean, you're adding a second middle school to Bartlett. So we can certainly, you know, collaborate and investigate what the options are for, you know, keeping your easements. We can investigate an emergency only entrance or exit on Winston. We can certainly collaborate on those two items to come back to you with, you know, a report, feedback, whatever, whatever that would be. I'm not sure what that would look like for us to return here.
I think that would be great. And again, I want to reiterate my opinion. I think it's going to be, I think it'd be a great school. I think it's going to be an advanced school. It'd be a good thing to have in Bartlett. It's really not our job to say, oh my gosh, this is going to be a great middle school because we all know it will be because you're in charge now.
Absolutely.
But the problems that I foresee in my mind, you're going to have to alleviate some of those problems before I'm going to be on board.
So those are the two items though that I'm hearing tonight?
Yeah.
Well, in addition to what the residents were looking for also.
Yeah.
They have those on their list.
Could we, can we look at that? I mean, the residents, if the residents all want an eight foot fence, is that something that we can look? I mean, I'm asking, are we limited to six foot? Is that what the rule is or can we go up?
Six foot is what is required. So we, we only ask for what is required.
Then we can ask for eight.
Yeah, you can make a variance.
Yeah, we could, but the only concern I have there, my understanding was they were going to put that fence on a berm. going to put that fence on a berm, so would be higher, correct?
Correct. They moved the fence back, the grading of the site. This actually does seem to raise the height of the fence, two feet from what it was when it was at planning.
At the lower end?
They're moving it to the higher end, so it's higher up. So they're moving it towards a higher point than it was originally at.
The only thing I'm afraid of is, you know, let's not set a precedent, because somebody else will come in here and say, hey, you gave them an eight-foot fence. We want an eight-foot fence. You know, let them request it on an individual basis, and in essence, they're complying with that because if they're building it on a berm, it will be eight feet. So I don't think that's an issue.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, thank you, ladies.
I will send this back to staff. We have another item on our agenda tonight.
Thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bartlett Liquors and Wine Permit. The petitioner is requesting a special-use permit to sell beer, wine, and liquor in a packaged liquor store located at 1072 Army Trail Road in the Galleria Bartlett Shopping Center. The property is Zone B2 Neighborhood Shopping Zoning District. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a required public hearing, reviewed the petitioner's request, and recommended approval, subject to the conditions and finding facts of their meeting on June 2nd. If anybody has any questions, if not, I'd like to forward this off to Planning and Zoning, or to the village board for a vote. Sorry. Last one on my committee is the Orchards Gaming Special Use, and that is, the petitioner is requesting a special-use permit to serve beer, wine, and a gaming facility at 787, 978 South Bartlett Road in the Orchards Plaza Shopping Center. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a required public hearing, reviewed the petitioner's request, and recommended approval, subject to conditions and findings, facts of the meeting on June 2nd, 2023. Again, if anybody doesn't have any questions, we'll send this off to the village board for a vote. And that concludes my items on.
Committee, thank you Chairman Gunstein. Finally, we have Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Gansey.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item, Yummy Poké Beta application. This beta application from MMR10 Inc. doing business as Yummy Poké is for converting the loan remade and vacant space in the streets of Bartlett Shopping Center from an office to a modern code-compliant restaurant. Mr. Rafidia is the applicant and owner of the establishment and will be spending $167,730 to convert the space to Yummy Poké. Because some of the costs submitted are not eligible for the program, staff has determined that there will be $145,670 worth of beta-eligible improvements made. This includes framing, drywall, flooring, electrical work, plumbing, signage, countertops, fire suppression, and kitchen equipment. Staff presented the application and contractor quotes the EDC at its April 10th meeting along with recommendation for a $35,000 grant. This is similar to percentages approved for similar build-outs completed in this price range. The EDC voted unanimously to recommend a grant in the amount of $35,000. Please note, this application was submitted and presented to the EDC prior to any updates being made to the beta program.
Have we had a chance to go back and look at the changes to the beta program versus what was approved on this?
We reviewed this under the older application. We've been working on it with Mr. Rafidia for probably four or five months at this point, but we'll make sure to look at it and tick off all the boxes before we distribute the actual beta grant.
Will it change the financial end of it?
In this case, it will not.
Is this facility going to have gaming?
It will have gaming. Yes, it's going to be a restaurant that also has gaming involved with it, yes.
Is it restaurant-based with gaming, or is it a gaming facility that's a restaurant?
Restaurant, the first one. Restaurant facility also with gaming.
Man, you're a fiddler. It's going to be a restaurant first. Actually, we're opening the restaurant before we get the gaming, because we haven't had the gaming approved yet by the state, so it'll probably be, the restaurant would be open in a couple of weeks or so. So it's definitely a restaurant.
What kind of food is it?
It is, it's a polka-style Hawaiian sushi in a bowl. It's all served in a bowl with, like, you know, brown or white rice and all kinds of vegetables and, you know, salmon and carp, salmon, shrimp, and all that.
It's vegetarian, vegan, vegan also.
You can have vegan too. There's a vegan bowl too.
My only concern is not necessarily with the applicant, is that the facilities that we approve start out as restaurants, and again, I'm not saying that yours is going to start as a restaurant, and like Wheaties is now a gaming cafe with finger food, and that particular shopping center over there's got, you know, a couple of gaming, two gaming places currently. So, yeah, Wheaties closed up, and it's a gaming facility now, so that's my concern.
No, it is definitely a unique concept that really, very healthy food. I spent a lot of money in the place to make it appealing and inviting to customers. So first of all, it was just made for a restaurant, and of course, the gaming as additional use.
It'll generate more revenue for the village than the dental office did.
So did he fill out the updated application?
No.
Is he required to?
No, he had applied months before we.
I think he should be required to fill out the current application that we changed. We haven't approved it yet, but we approved the changes. Maybe it should be, I mean, I think it's just, he can fill it out and we can review it at a board meeting. I don't think that's a big deal.
We approved it tonight.
I understand that.
Just so we have the updated application on file, right?
Sure thing.
That's just my view.
All right. I just have one little question. How's the gaming going to be set up? Is it like behind a wall? Like, is it?
It's going to be behind a wall and with a glass, you know, shielding the playroom from the restaurant.
Okay, so it's still a place like kids could come in and?
No, kids can't come in.
Is it family-friendly? Is it going to be family-friendly, or do you have to be 21?
Yeah, it is family-friendly. Actually, it's going to really, this concept benefit a lot from Elevate next door, which is all natural shake and juice, and from Lisa Dance School, and all the parents that come to bring their kids to the ice cream shop. So this complements all the uses in the shopping center, and it's healthy food. It's mainly, and most importantly, it's healthy bowl of food for $12, $13 that can do much better than any other food, if I may say.
Grooby.
All right, any other questions?
Nope.
All right, we'll forward the beta grant request to the next village board meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Gansey. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins? Laporte?
Do you want to stay overnight?
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.